All right, so my name is Zenovia Harris. I am the CEO for the Kent Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to welcome you to our September luncheon, which is our City Council Forum. I'm using the word forum, not debate, so if that's what you're expecting, you are at a forum. And so we have some questions put together by the community and also our government affairs team. You'll notice on your tables that there are some note cards, and those note cards is your opportunity to ask questions that you may have. And then we have Madoka here, and John, our moderator, will go over that more, but we have someone here to actually pick up those questions. So that's why you have the note cards there. Again, I'm Zenovia. On behalf of the board, our staff, we want to welcome you. We want this to be very engaging. We appreciate you being here.
Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the community and valued candidates, welcome to the Crucial Council Candidates Forum. We are gathered today to provide a platform for our candidates to express their views and insights on matters that shape the future of our city. This forum will follow a structured format, ensuring equal opportunity for all candidates. Our government affairs team has meticulously crafted a set of questions that span topics such as taxation, economic development, safety, and budgeting. These questions would be posted candidates during the event, allowing them one to two minutes to respond. In addition to the preparation questions, there might be an opportunity for audience engagement. As we invite attendees to submit questions related to candidate behavior, policies, or clarifications, questions need to be submitted to the moderators. Someone will be happy to collect your questions and submit them for you. Time is precious commodity, and in light of that, we've allowed 90 seconds per question for each candidate. Our questions have been thoroughly curated in advance, and we have also allotted time for both opening and closing statements for each candidate. If you have questions that you'd like the candidate to address, kindly jot it down on a note card and pass it on to a dedicated staff, member's staff. Madoka, please raise your hand.
She is outside.
She's outside? Okay, Bruce will raise his hand. Please note that we'll be collecting these questions after the second inquiry, which should take approximately 20 minutes, 25 minutes from now. "As to our esteemed audience, your presence here today underscores the significance of a Democrat endeavor. Your respectful engagement is sincerely appreciated." Candidates, as we delve into the questions, please be aware that your response window of 90 seconds commences once the question is read aloud. You'll be alerted by a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has elapsed. Let's ensure a productive and insightful discussion as we collectively work towards an informed electorate and stronger community. Thank you. Okay, we're going to start off with, we have you please introduce yourself, and we'd like to know what inspired you to run for the City Council and what sets you apart from your opponents in the race.
So I am a product of Kent. I am a Kentwood graduate. And in addition to that, my mom actually owned a small business in the Kent Valley, and my dad worked for Boeing. So I bring that background, and I'm very acutely aware of how, you know, the economic impact of large businesses on small businesses. And, you know, every time Boeing had a layoff, my mom's business experience just set back. So acutely aware of that. And I returned after college. I now live in Panther Lake with my husband and two teenagers. In my day job, I am a digital marketing director for a global consulting firm. So you'll see a recurring theme, that economic development and marketing and business improvement are key themes of mine. During my time on council, I've been, I was elected in 2019. I have served on the Economic Development Committee, Parks, Public Works. For King County, I've been Kent's representative in the Affordable Housing Committee, and then I'm currently serving as Kent's representative on the Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council. I was inspired to get involved in local government when, after the recession in 2009, I was seeing that our neighboring communities were revitalizing themselves and experiencing a lot more economic development than I thought we were, and I kind of started asking questions and getting involved and wanting to know why. So that has really been my inspiration, and it's been sort of a theme throughout my time on council. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Wiggins Crawford, and I am also a lifelong Kent resident. I'm a KM graduate. I only moved away to go to college. Go Cougs. Darn. I grew up in a family where my dad owned his own trucking company. It was based here in Kent. I started dispatching trucks at the age of eight. So I have worked from some very, for some very small, family-owned companies to the world's largest medical distributor and everything in between. I currently work for a small law firm in Seattle. And so I have a keen sense of all sorts of businesses because I've had a varied career. I've worked for an airline. I've worked for freight forwarders. I've worked for distributors. And seeing how businesses kind of, what they need to flourish. And I was inspired to run because I lived on the Green River, and seeing how the homelessness is impacting the community, the business community, the residents, I decided that it was time to stop complaining about the issues that I was seeing around me, businesses closing and moving away, and doing something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zenovia and John, for having this event for us, for the Candidates Forum. My name is John Boyd. I'm running for Kent, City Council, position number three, against Kelly here. And the reason why I'm running is because I felt that I can, I can make a change. I don't want to make drastic changes, but I can make a change. I know I can. I just retired from Boeing last year with a combined total of 37 years. I had 26 at Boeing and 11 and a half at McDonald Douglas in California. I don't know if anybody ever heard of McDonald Douglas, but Boeing bought them. So anyway, I've been here in the state of Washington. I live over on the West Hill now. I've been here in the state of Washington for over 26 years. And my passions are, first of all, I'm pro-business and I'm pro-life. And I'm deeply concerned about the homelessness. And I'm deeply concerned about our people out there abusing drugs and alcohol. People are dying every day. And I do, and I will help them, once I'm elected. And once again, thank you for having us and having me. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, John, and thank you to the chamber for having this opportunity for people to get to meet us and come out today. I am looking forward to it. I grew up here in Kent as well. I grew up near Park Orchard Elementary and graduated from Kentwood High School. I then joined the Army. I served in North Carolina in Germany. And then I came back and was raising my son, and I chose to live here in Kent. And during that time, I served on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and I got my degree from University of Washington Tacoma. And then in 2019, I decided that it was time for me to run for council. There had been some violent crimes occurring in front of my home. And also, I had served on the Parks and Recreation Commission for some time, and I just felt that it was time for me to step up. And I believe that Kent deserves the very best representation, and then I thought I could provide that. So that's what inspired me to run. What sets me apart is the work that I've already done. I work for a small business here on Kent's East Hill, so I am very aware of the challenges facing this community. Also, I was on the ECDC Committee until we went to Committee of the Whole, so I am aware of, I was in a position that I could help businesses in Kent. And I will finish with that.
Yes, hello. I'd like to thank you for hosting this forum. My name is Darryl Jones, actually. And I come from a customer service background, and I believe that that makes me eminently qualified to represent the residents of Kent. The reason being because in customer service, the key thing is to listen. Listen to the businesses, listen to the people, and work to resolve their issues. I've talked to people from all socioeconomic backgrounds, all cultures, all races. The thing is to make your customer happy. Do what you can to make the customer happy. And that customer here are the residents and businesses operating in Kent. Like Councilmember Mashad, I was spurred to run due to crime. Actually, one Friday evening, I heard screaming outside of my living room window. I went outside. My Indian neighbor was getting pummeled by two assailants. And I put a stop to that. They didn't want to arrest him, so that was fine. But it was crime that made me want to run. But people have talked a good game about public safety, but when they get into office, we, the people, are still left to fend for ourselves. Those boarded-up windows in front of businesses are proof of that. I have, I'm determined to basically put a stop to that or, at the very least, find out why nothing is being done to resolve this particular problem. I have no intention of being a leader. Is that somebody who directs you? I intend to be a vessel for the people to speak through. Thank you.
Okay, question number two. Kent services event as the vital economic hub propelling the Puget Sound region forward. The mayor stated in her 2023 City, State of the City address that in 2022, Kent saw a 21% increase in new business and a 50, or new business licenses, and 51% increase in new jobs associated with those new licenses compared to the previous year. As a dedicated City Council member, how do you envision channeling the dynamic energy towards fostering enduring economic and social progress within our community? We'll start with Marley.
Thank you. I think one of the most important things that we have done is, you know, in my time in council, we, during COVID, I don't think any of us ever expected to have to be navigating a city through a global pandemic. But we reached out and did direct funding and direct support to businesses. And I think in that effort, we gained a lot of knowledge about the very small business space and the small business space. I think it's time for us now to take that knowledge and do more with it. We've got some programs in the works, some business accelerator programs coming out of our Economic Development Department that are specifically targeting new food-based businesses and some new segments. One challenge that we have is we continue to run a pretty small staff at Kent. When you look at, compared to our neighbors, you know, we run almost a skeleton crew. And that's one thing that I'm interested in looking at as we go into our next budget cycle in the coming months is additional staff support for businesses so that we can serve a broader economic or a broader swath of the industries and business and business sizes. So that is, I think, one thing that we can definitely take a look at is just having more manpower in our department that supports businesses in Kent.
So as I mentioned when I introduced myself, I've noticed that there's been quite a few boarded-up small businesses in the Kent Valley. And I feel that we need to attract some diversity that we may be lacking. Kent is the 29th most diverse city in the country. And I think that we need to tap into some of those minority populations to try and encourage them to open small businesses to help kind of embrace the diversity that we do have in our city. And I know that there's some programs that the Kent City Council has already started implementing, and I think that some of the things that I've been considering would dovetail nicely into that with the more staffing, as Marley explained. So I think that we just need to kind of look at some ways to attract some smaller businesses back into the Valley core to promote that and foster that socio-economic growth that we all want.
So from what I've learned over the past, I guess, couple of months, is that there's 136,000 people that live here in Kent, and actually, there's 65,000 of these people that are actually working. So that's pretty good average right there, I would think. My ideal so far is bringing work back into the city of Kent or keeping work here in the city of Kent is, first of all, look where we're sitting at right now. We're in a satellite office called Green River City College, right? Why don't we have a Kent City College? Why can't we build a Kent City College or a Kent Technical School so we could train our individuals, our residents who live here in the city of Kent? Have them go to school here, have them work here, have them, you know, pay back, or like they say, pay it forward. My ideal, I believe, is probably been thought about before, but I know it can happen because this has happened in so many other cities around us. So I said, let's get to work and let's put our residents to work and let's get more people to work. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we have done some things on council. First of all, we have upgraded our permit system to hopefully reduce permit times. I know that was a major complaint when I was first elected. We have upgraded our system and now reduced those wait times. During COVID, we approved a small business flex fund for capital dollars for businesses. Oftentimes, when you are, let's say, trying to open a restaurant, you need a lot of money to renovate that space. We have also, council has also added funds for childcare businesses for capital as well. In fact, just this morning, I was talking to the ECD Director about someone who has a permit in for a childcare center. So we are working through those types of things. We know there is a lack of childcare, and so we are working on it. We are also investing in our downtown core to bring people there. We just renovated Curson Park. It's beautiful. We also have some plans to have a housing developer come in and upgrade some buildings down there. Our ECD staff, though they are a limited group, they are super talented and hardworking, and they are concerned about our businesses here, and they are working hard.
Kent serves as a vital economic hub propelling the Puget Sound region forward. The mayor stated in her 2023 State of the City address that in 2022, Kent saw a 21% increase in new business licenses and 51% increase in new jobs associated with new licenses. As a dedicated City Councilor, how do you envision channeling the dynamic energy towards fostering enduring economic and social progress within our community?
Thank you. First, what I would work on doing is keeping the BNO taxes at their current level. Take action to make it easier for small businesses, for startups, to begin opening their shops in Kent. I would also bring in, well, franchise businesses, if you will. Because I've noticed driving around Kent in certain areas, such as where Blue Origin, I believe, is located. And in effect, you need a car to go somewhere to actually get something to eat. And in order to bring businesses in, you should have locations where they can just walk down the street and purchase something, and then walk back to work. And in addition to that, I would honestly just say, clean up portions of the downtown quarter. And part of that has to do with the homeless population as you have businesses out there who have to go and clean up after these people. There's a Mexican restaurant that's been closed for a while, I believe, at the corner of Central and Meeker. The windows are broken out of it. It's just an eyesore. Why would somebody want to open a business next to that? That's my answer.
All right, question number three. Public safety is a critical concern for the community and the Safer Kent Initiative, including the introduction of several new ordinances representing a significant step towards enhancing safety and quality of life in Kent. However, these changes also have a substantial impact on our local businesses. Therefore, we are interested in your perspective on how these ordinances affect our business community and what steps you plan to take to ensure accountability and support for our local businesses in this context. Specifically, how do you plan, how do you perceive the impact of the Safer Kent Initiative ordinance on our local business community? Have you had the opportunity to gather feedback strategy, to gather feedback from business owners regarding these changes? John, we're going to start with you this time.
So, no, I haven't had the opportunity to gather the feedback on the ordinance, but I do know that we should communicate. We, I mean, talking about communicate. I'm saying we should talk to our neighboring cities. Ask them how they're doing with their issues and what can we do to add to ours. And I know this sounds like a dumb answer, but I think that Kent is a prosperous city. Kent has a lot going for it. We have an outstanding mayor who's running the city like a well-tuned machine. And we have a city council that we have right now. They're doing a darn good job. I have no complaints about the type of, the work that they're doing. As a matter of fact, they're doing real good. And that's it. I know, I didn't do much research on this, and I'm sorry, but, okay, thank you.
Kelly?
I'm unfortunately in the same boat as John, is not having done a ton of research on how the ordinance impacts the city, or the business owners. However, I know that the ordinance impact that was passed recently, and it may be the same ordinance, where the homeless are no longer allowed to camp in public spaces. Is that the same ordinance? Anyway, so, but there, the city is doing a lot to try and connect homeless to services. And I know that the homeless have been impacting businesses negatively in sleeping in your doorways and creating messes around your buildings and essentially making a nuisance. Customers obviously don't want to shop places where there's issues. So I haven't seen an ordinance come out of the council recently that I have disagreed with, and I know that they are doing a lot to try and improve life for business owners.
Mary?
Thank you. Yeah, so there were, you know, a number of public safety ordinances, including the camping ordinance. I believe we were the first city locally to vote to make public drug use a gross misdemeanor. And so I will say, you know, I think there's an under, there's like a sub-context of the question about perhaps the ordinances are not supporting the businesses as they had hoped. So I do know that when we begin the ordinance process, we do, you know, public outreach. It may not be broad outreach. It may be just leaning into our business owners that we have relationships with and floating it by them. So I am curious if the ordinances are not working or are not working, perhaps. They're fairly new, so maybe it's just a matter for them not working fast enough. It takes some time. But if there are problems, I would definitely like to hear about it. I would invite anybody to email me, grab me after this. Zandria and I both, we would really like to know what's not working and see where we can make further improvements. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, as Marley stated, we definitely want to hear from you. There were a series of bills or ordinances passed. We dealt with drug possession. Unfortunately, the state came up with their own law for that. We did the homeless encampment law and then also the spray paint, restricting sales of that to people under the age of 18. So a couple of things. If you feel like the homeless encampment ordinance is not working well, yes, please let us know. If this is happening on private property, you have to call the police department and work with them. It's difficult for, police just can't go onto your property and trespass people. So you need to make sure that you are connecting with the police department. We have done a lot. This current council has done a lot. Unfortunately, the state, I don't want to make excuses, but unfortunately, the state is making a lot of decisions that are not helping us here in Kent. So some things that we have done, we have our new co-responder program that frees up time for police to be out on the streets dealing with violent crime. The co-responders are also there. A nurse and a social worker, thank you, are out there, and they can work on with individuals who are facing crisis or homelessness, and they can spend more time with those individuals. We have increased hiring. We now have more officers than we've ever had before.
Darryl?
Yes. With the Safer Kent Initiative, I actually start to answer this question with a question. Do the people out here in the audience, do you feel safer? Because I can tell you, I certainly do not. Speaking on drug possessions, for example, when I came home yesterday, there was a homeless individual on the side of my building in the alley, getting ready to do drugs right there. I actually took a video of it. Had his drug paraphernalia out, and I asked him to move along. He moved along. So that has not been addressed. You can make all the ordinances you want, but if they're not enforced, what difference does it make? With regards to the homeless, well, basically, just pushing them to the other side of the city limit sign is not resolving the problem. It takes those people five minutes or less to walk right back into the city. And I've been in touch with, what is it? Dow Constantine's office regarding what they are going to do about resolving that problem. I'm not even elected to a political position, but I love Kent, and I'd like to see it do well. I've been here six years, and that's the longest I've been in any city in the 12 years that I've been here in Washington. So if we're going to make ordinances, let's make sure that these are enforced, and any impact on businesses is a positive impact.
In 2021, the City Council adopted the Kent Housing Option Plan, which lays out the city's strategies for meeting the growing demand for housing costs, choices. Kent focuses on preserving and improving what we have, ensuring we identify and fill the gaps within size, density, and price range. It mentions incentivizing scalable multifamily middle housing units to look at code amendments and development regulations.
John, your mic is not working.
It's not working? Oh, it's off, sorry. Okay, is that better? There we go. Sorry about that. I'm sorry. In 2021, the City Council adopted the Kent Housing Options Plan, which lays out the city's strategies for meeting the growing demand to housing choices. Kent focuses on preserving and improving what we have and ensuring the identity, we identify and fill gaps in size, density, and price range. It mentions incentivizing scalable multifamily middle housing units to look at code amendments and development regulations. Kent has been proactive in advocating against one-size-fits-all approaches to housing legislature at the state level. How do you plan to continue representing Kent's unique needs and interests in housing-related legislations? And what specific policies or initiatives would you advocate for at the state level to benefit our community? We'll start off with Zandria.
First of all, I want to say that Kent has always met their growth targets. Yay us. We also have the most naturally affordable housing. Many people come here because it's inexpensive. Some things that we are doing because the state has decided to make decisions for us is that, we actually talked about this at our retreat. Some of the only things that we are able to do is to incentivize certain types of development. Kent has, our goal is to put high-density housing in our core areas that have transit, so downtown and on the West Hill. So we are incentivizing those things. We just, this past council meeting, approved a tax exemption for multifamily housing down in downtown. It's going to improve that area, make it look better. So really, the only thing that we can do at this point is incentivize growth where we want it.
Yes. What, there's really not much you can do other than attempt to repeal what the state has done. From what I understand of reading of that plan, basically, city planning has been taken out of the hands of the city out of the hands of the city and has been put in the hands of the state. So, in effect, they are forcing these multifamily housing units onto these cities. So, going to the state level, that's the only thing that you could possibly do, other than comply. And it is correct. They want these multifamily housing units by transit centers. So, well, that's basically it. You can't really do anything but get them to repeal it, put the power back into the hands of the cities, and then allow the cities to determine what they want to look like.
Thank you. As Andrea mentioned, this was a hot topic in our recent retreat, and yes, there has been a lot that's come out from the state that is limiting what we could do at the city level. My challenge to staff during the retreat was, okay, you've just given me a list of what we can't do. Come back to me, I'd like to know what can we do? And I think that's the approach we have to take when the state limits us, is what else can we do? And we have to really dig deep and get creative. I personally don't find multifamily housing a problem. I'm hearing a lot of negative threads around it, but I think that, you know, we know that a housing affordability is affected by, by volume and, you know, number of units, and we need that density. That is a good way to create density and new units. I do think we have work to do in maybe looking at, we have, we do have incentive programs on the books. We can't make anybody use our incentive programs. One of our programs is to incentivize ownership. I think there's some condo reform things that still need to happen at the state, but we have, I think that's one area that we could take a look at, is how can we perhaps revise that or make that incentive program even more, more attractive, so that we can open up more opportunities for actual ownership as well. And I think I'm about to run out of time, so I won't even go on to my next topic, because I can talk forever on this.
Thank you.
I agree with my man down here. Yeah, the state did do a lot to basically kneecap the city as far as housing and stuff is concerned. And it seems like they, and it seems like they want to, they want to force, they want to force these low-income housing units into places where maybe people don't want them. There has to be a balanced approach. Like, I get it, affordable housing is necessary, it is. However, we shouldn't, we shouldn't impose upon people something that they don't want on their property or whatever. So, I say, let's continue with, let's continue with apartment, apartment buildup, but where apartment buildup's supposed to be, maybe not the, maybe not the residential areas per se, but things that were, I know in North California, so I say zoned R2 or R3, which means, you know, in Calif, in California, they had specific zones for apartments and stuff. I'd love to see that here, continue here, without having to force that upon single-family, single-family residential dwellings. If we can find that balance and find out where we can zone low-income housing versus, as I say, where we can zone low-income houses to where it doesn't push upon, I mean, I might have tied, but where it doesn't push upon the single-family residences, then I think that would be the best approach. And I would definitely push it that way.
Kelly?
So, I agree that the state legislature did a lot of damage to all cities in passing the, in the last session, where they basically took the ability for cities to plan for themselves out of their hands. When we talk about affordable housing, we often think about landlords, tenants, rentals. Historically, the affordable housing has been provided by small landlords, mom and pops, if you will. So, people that own less than five units, they are being pushed out of the market, and they're selling their rentals. And so, people would think, well, that means that people are now able to afford and buy homes, when that's not necessarily true. Corporate landlords are coming in and buying up, and they're increasing rent. So, what we're seeing is what is traditionally protected, that affordable housing for the middle class and low class is being shoved out. And there has been a movement to pass legis, or pass ordinances in cities to protect tenant rights, and I think that's going to erode away at even more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
So, from my understanding, when, how, and where we could build housing depends on the land use plan, the land use policy. I think we need to cut through all the red tape and have more planning, more meetings, whereas we're building more affordable housing, middle housing. And I do believe that we need to have more affordable housing, middle housing, built along the transit areas, built where, say, a low-income person making low, under minimum wages could, could live there and still have access to, to the light rail, to the bus, to the trains. I, I'm an opponent of having multi-units apartments built along the I-5 corridor, for sure, definitely. And, and to, we talk about affordable housing, people, I heard people mention that the ADUs are the way to go. Now, ADUs, from my understanding, since 1995, the, the ordinance was passed, and since then, there was only, it's only been 30 ADUs built. So, I want to know what's, what's the problem with that. I do believe in, like I said, having the, the housing built, affordable housing for those who can't afford it. And we also need to make sure that they have wages where they could make their, their rent, pay their rent to. Thank you.
What do you believe is the appropriate funding level for public safety?
Um...
Let me...
Oh, sorry.
Do you support hiring more police officers? Why or why not? And how would you pay for hiring more officers?
Yeah, so, I have, I proudly have always fully funded the police, the police force. I think we can't have a vital prosperous city unless our people and our property is safe. Paying for it is definitely a challenge. We, you know, have, as Andrea mentioned, we are now fully staffed in our police department, fully, but we are fully staffed to our budget. So, what, basically, we need to create more budget for it. We are looking at that. It's going to be part of our discussions this fall, definitely. But, you know, I would love to have the, the revenue of Bellevue and be able to put, you know, twice as many officers on the street, but that is, that is certainly a challenge. But it is something that we need to take a look at, and there will be, I believe, some options coming out, you know, in this next quarter for us to figure out how to increase even further. And then, we're going into another budget cycle, so there again, we have an opportunity to take a look at the budget, and if we can increase the budget for police, then we can staff up even more. But we are fully staffed, but please be aware, that's fully staffed to, to our budget allotment. So, that is, it's an ongoing challenge, and I think it is our biggest challenge going into this next term. Thank you.
Jessica?
I'm a big advocate, I'm a big advocate for the police, and I do believe that, you know, fully funding the police is the way to go. Never believed in the defund the police movement, ever. That said, Marley's right, we do need to have room, we do need to have room in the budget, and we do need to have a, some kind of increase in, in revenue. Either that, or we need to find out where, what in the budget, what in the budget we could work, so that we can fund police in the meantime, to where, when we do increase, we do increase revenue, maybe we can bring, you know, more residents in, more taxpayers, and things like that. But I think, I do think law enforcement is first and foremost, and I do think that having that level of, having that level of law enforcement that increases as the budget, as the budget increases, it will only be a great thing for Kent. So, I would love to take, just take a look at everything in the budget, find out where we can, you know, where we can quote-unquote, rob Peter to pay Paul for the meantime, until we can, until we get that revenue stream, so that our cops are fully funded, staffed, and paid for.
Kelly?
So, I am very much about making sure that the police are staffed fully, and that means more than just more officers. They can't do their jobs effectively if they don't have the support staff. As Marley has alluded to, they are staffed to budget. I have had a conversation, done a ride-along, and I, I know the optimistic numbers of what the police department would like to see. And I don't think the numbers are unreasonable. Kent operates with far fewer police officers than any other municipality around us, and they're literally going from one call to the next call to the next call. And the officer that I rode with expressed that he, they can't proactively police anymore. They can't drive through parking lots to check license plates for stolen cars, and those are all things that, as police officers, they really want to do. And I'm very much about being an advocate for them and making sure that they get the resources that they need. Where that fund comes from, I know that there's some things on the horizon that the council has looked at to try and get some more revenue to fund the police, and I wholeheartedly support it.
John?
Yes. I was watching this past Zoom video last night with Chief Padilla on it, and he said that they're basically fully staffed. I think it's like 166 right now. And first of all, let me say, you'll never hear me say, "defund the police." I want you to hear me say, too, I want to defend the police, but I want to defend them when they're doing what's right. I want to defend them when they're out there, you know, they have a short response time when, when we have all these break-ins up, up and down packed highway with cars, just smashing at windows and, and just taking everything. And crime, yeah, it's, it's terrible right now, I understand that. As of today, as of this year, we have doubled our homicide rate since last year at the same time. Last, last year was nine, we're now up to 17. Yes, we could, should fund the police, I guess, I know people don't want to hear this, but through property taxes. And I know we got 25% of our property taxes right now are in our general fund. And if we have to increase the property tax to keep our police officers efficient and with the tools that they need, and, and the training that they need, then, I mean, so be it. We might have to, you know, bite the bullet, and I know people don't want to hear that, people who own homes, I'm sorry, got to raise property taxes.
Andrea?
This current council has been very supportive of our police department. We have, as Marley said, we have increased our police staff levels to the highest that they have ever been. We did that while other departments cannot hire police officers. Half of our budget is spent on public safety. We are coming up on a budget cycle, and I know council, this will be in the forefront of our minds. We will be discussing it and seeing what other options we have to get funds, so we can have more police officers. The good news is, is that we hired a whole lot of officers this year. The bad news is that it takes about a year for them to go through training. So, at some point in the future, we will have more officers out on the street than we currently do. The police chief has also changed police schedules, so that there are more officers out on the street at one time. Council is doing everything we can. We want more officers. Unfortunately, the state, there was an option for them to help us fund police, and they did not even consider it. So, we are looking at all avenues to address this issue. We know it's bad. As Kelly said, we have the fewest amount of police officers in the surrounding area. So, we are working on it. We know it's a problem.
Yes, I support hiring more police officers. Now, I do know that, as I said, we're fully staffed based on funding. And so, in order to find the funds, the first area to look is to see where cuts can be made in the existing budget. If no cuts can be made, if only minimal cuts can be made, before attempting to tax anyone, I would go to the people and then ask the people if they are willing to pay additional tax for additional officers, pointing out the fact that Kent was like number 16. It ranked from the worst cities in Washington when it comes to crime. So, they can either choose to pay an additional tax if they want in order to pay for it, or not complain as the situation deteriorates.
I got two rebuttal questions on the, regarding those also. You brought up a great point about taxes. Should Kent send a property tax raise to the voters to help fund more police officers? And with as many concerned citizens that we have in regards to crime, do we know if the Kent PD is trying to recruit more volunteers to increase the police presence? Would that be helpful? Would that not be helpful? What do we do? We'll start with you, Daryl, heading this way.
Yes, I would put it out for a vote to the people and let the people decide, because, well, businesses, entities as well, but let them decide. Do they want to pay more in taxes for more police? And insofar as police volunteers, if individuals are willing to do so, then yes. However, you'll run into a problem there, because if these are unarmed individuals that you're sending out in the street to volunteer, all you'd have to do is look at Los Angeles, because they had unarmed volunteers out to help the police, and one of them just stood there as somebody was getting carjacked, because there's not, not much they can do, but call the police as they watch crime take place. So, I'm thinking if you do that, in effect, you're just putting other people's lives in danger.
I agree with Daryl on that point. It makes me real nervous to have volunteers out there with police outfits on, and they are unarmed. I, you know, currently, they do things like handicap parking violations and things like that. So, I think under some circumstances, it might be okay, but it does make me real nervous, and it could make the city liable for some, some bad things. So, overall, yes, and yes, with some, you know, caveats.
So, back to my previous answer, I said that we might have to raise our property taxes to pay for police officers, I mean, new recruits. And there's a lot of people, I know here in this room, a lot of people sitting here at this table, these tables, are complaining about crime. I mean, what you want to do, you want to complain, or you want, you want to pay? You know, yep, put it out to, for a vote, and see if we want to increase our property taxes. And then, back in our general funds again, like I said, we, 25% of our general funds come from property taxes. So, where can we skim off money from that 25% to, to have more police officers? To have more police officers that, that have a better, quicker response time? To have police officers that go out to, to situations where they're needed and not where they're needed? So, I would think that the volunteers could probably assist with our, our medics and our, our individuals that go out there and treat people with mental health issues or drug abuse issues. And I think that we, we could work this out. Kent's a beautiful place, and I love it. Thank you.
To speak to property, property taxes, yeah, yes, I would ask that that be sent to the voters. However, it's not just property owners who benefit from having a police department, and I think there needs to be some solutions sought. And I know that the council has looked at them, the state has denied it, but there are some options that potentially could be available, that it would spread the cost across all community members, not just the property owners and the business owners. And so, I would be excited to look at some different options that spread the taxes across all residents of Kent, not just those that own property. I think they kind of take the brunt of it. But I am not opposed to new taxes for funding police. I would be opposed to volunteers unless it was very specific situations. That just feels like it would be opening up the city to liability for vigilante justice.
As far as volunteers, I've seen where volunteers did things like they wrote out and like take police reports and things like that. Really simple things for the, for the real crazy stuff, yeah, no, no unarmed volunteers to do that. No, 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 bad idea. But as far as getting the funding for the police, yeah, I, maybe it's just me, but I don't think that taxing, I don't think that raising property taxes in business should be the first, be the first option. I think that we should actually, because, think about it, the, when we, when we put out that bill, it's like the bill has to be written, and it has to be introduced, and then it's got to be voted on in the election cycle, this might got to be, there's a lot of time going there. Meanwhile, crime's not going anywhere. We have, if we have an immediate need to, to address the crime rate like we do now, we have to do something immediately. And again, this is why I say, maybe, maybe we could look at the, maybe we could look at the budget and say, and see, okay, can, can we take 1% from this, 2% from that? And, you know, not, nothing crazy, but just enough to, just make sure we have enough to address what's going on out there in the, in the immediate. And then, down the road, yeah, we can look at presenting taxes to the people and the businesses. But until then, and then, remember, they could always say no. But to address this, we need to do something immediately.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's, you know, pretty unanimous here across the table. I, I agree, I have grave concerns about the volunteer situation. I think there might be some back office roles they could fill, but I think we actually do fill those pretty well with the volunteers today. As far as property taxes, I'm never going to be opposed to letting the people decide on a tax issue. So, if it came down to letting something go out for a public vote, I would support that. I will say about property tax, you know, we... I will say about property tax, you know, we, the city provides everything we provide. Water, sewer, utilities, roads, paving, all of that, and police, and parks. We provide all of that from the general fund, which is mostly funded through property tax. But that comes out to only about five hundred dollars per household per year. So, that comes back to the city. You pay a lot more in taxes, we all do, but a lot of that goes to other places. We, as a city, only get about five hundred dollars per household per year. So, we're squeezed tight, and our budget is tight for that. And I think, you know, knowing that it takes a year to get officers trained and out actually serving the community, we have time to pursue something that would be a more permanent fix. So, I think that would be where my preference would be. Thank you.
What is your opinion on Kent moving to a district representation for council members? We'll start with you, Marley.
I actually support this. I think it is, you know, where things have been districted before, it shows that there is an increase in equity, there's an increase in public engagement. It's, there's an increase really in customer service. I mean, you know exactly who serves your neighborhood and who to contact, and I think there's a lot more engagement and public participation when you have dedicated districts. So, that is something that I've always been in support of.
Actually, I kind of support it too. I mean, everything else, if we look at everything else, you know, even the country has states, and states have, you know, cities, cities have districts. And I don't, you know, I don't see, I wouldn't see why we have a city council but not have districts. And districts, actually, Marley's right, districts makes it personal. And it makes it so that neighborhoods do know who their representatives are, who they're voting for. And not only that, it brings the, it brings the macro to a micro, and it's a lot easier for individuals to manage that way. So, yeah, I, you know, I actually am for that.
I echo the sentiments of the previous two speakers. I actually support it. I don't think it's a terrible idea. Kent has grown large enough that it's, it has its diverse, different communities. West Hill's, you know, different from East Hill, and the valley's got different needs in some regards. I mean, we all have issues that we are in common, but each community has its own kind of little niche needs. And so, I don't see why we wouldn't district. It makes sense. It makes, it makes the council a little bit more approachable when you know who your council member is.
Okay, I first like to agree with all the other three candidates on the table here. I think we should have a district wide. I know, I remember when I first started running for city council, and I was talking to, I'd be talking to people outside of Kent, like in Federal Way, Auburn, and Seattle, and they'd be always asking me, well, what district are you running for? I say, it's not a district, I'm running at large. So, but the district, running for, I mean, putting a district back in into the fact where we have a district that we represent, I think would be really, really, I mean, it'll be personal for, say, a council person. You'll know who lives in your district. You'll get a chance to visit him, talk to him. And you'll know what their needs are because you're there, you live there, you know, you represent them. And I think, yes, that having district for Kent City Council would be real good and real wise. Thank you.
So, I graduated with a minor in politics, and this is a major political theoretical debate that cannot be summarized in ninety seconds. There are pros and cons of both sides. It would be great for me to be a council member and to only have, I don't know, thirty thousand people in my district. That would be so easy for me. However, when you're on council, there are seven of us. And if I'm only concerned about what's happening at Springwood Park, and I don't care about downtown, it's going to create some issues. Right now, all of us care about the entire city. We want it to function as a whole and ensure that everyone is represented. It's also really difficult to get people involved and willing to serve on city council. Who knows who your council member would be if you are living in an area where no one wants to step up and do it? So, I do have concerns about it. There are pros and cons. I'm in the middle. I like the way it is now because I want to advocate for the entire city. So, that's my thoughts. I see the pros and cons.
I am for moving to districts. I actually grew up, well, forty-five years, and there were set districts. And it worked out just fine for everybody. It lets you know who to hold accountable should you have an issue. Or not who to hold accountable, but who to call should you have an issue. Who to hold accountable if that issue doesn't get taken care of, and who to vote against if that issue does not get resolved to your satisfaction. So, no, I believe it would be a boon. Because even if you're only representing the people, well, you're not only representing the people in your district, you're representing the people in your district. And then, as the council members get together, then you could just express your concerns about what's going on in your district. Say, Les can express the concerns about what's going on in his district. But all in all, all districts, all seven, are still concerned about the city as a whole.
How would you see the partnership of the Kent School District and the city working?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
How would you see the partnership of the Kent School District and the city working? The city, city, the partnership between the two?
Well, to be honest, I didn't know there was a partnership. Because with the school district, that's, I believe that's supposed to be a separate entity with their, with leaders in their own positions for that district, and then that, and then the city itself. So, like I said, I come from a customer service background. I have no children in school. And so, therefore, the workings of the school district hadn't really been at the top of my concerns other than when they went on strike last year. So, I'll just pass along the mic because I've got no specific answer to that question.
Okay, so, it is true that in the past, there was not a very good working relationship. Now that there is a new superintendent, there are regular meetings with members of city staff and the school district. They've even met with the council. We had a meeting a few months ago. The Parks Department is heavily involved in Kent School District, like after-school programs, youth programs. And they are actually meeting, the Parks Department and the school district are actually meeting to work on some potential capital projects to improve fields and things like that. So, the relationship is much better than it used to be, and we are working on it.
So, I don't know the relationship between the Kent City School Districts and the parks, but I do believe that they should go hand in hand. I believe that we should have volunteers from our schools, I mean, continually or on a, maybe on a weekly basis, go out and address our park issues, like, you know, the garbage, the trash, you know. I think the partnership would be a great idea. And, well, like I say, I don't know too much about it because I'm just not hearing about this today. But I think it'd be a good idea. Thank you.
I know that, as Andrea stated, that under the previous superintendent, that the school district and the city kind of operated independently. I know that they have been, they've been in some better communication with the new superintendent. And I think that there's some programs that they've been working on to try and bridge the gap a little bit. My son is now finally out of high school. And I know that it would have been nice to have some better programs to, for him to participate in for after-school. And Kent Parks has stepped up, I believe in the last few years, since I didn't need it any longer, that they have some programs that kids can participate in. And I, I think that having those kind of relationships really benefit Kent residents.
So, if the new superintendent's willing to work with the city and create that partnership, then that's great. I mean, you know, seven more brains on the city council is always a good thing to bounce, is always a good thing to bounce things off of. That said, there does have to be oversight. And I think that that would provide the necessary oversight to the school boards to make sure that, you know, they don't run away with things. Now, I'm not saying that that would happen, but I'm just saying it would lessen that chance. So, yeah, if he's willing, if they're willing to work with the city hand in glove, then awesome. That's a great thing.
Yeah, as Andrea mentioned, you know, we've made great improvements in our communication and partnership with the school district under the new superintendent. I can tell you, though, as a mom of two kids in the school district who are in high school, it never fails, every spring, I, some constituents are reaching out to me for help to connect their teens with workforce programs and trade training. That is an area where I still think we have a lot of work to do. We have a valley full of employers, and not every kid is going to go to college. And these parents are not getting from the schools themselves the information they need. So, I think that's something that, you know, with this new partnership, increased communication, and I know there's been some new staff at the district that are dedicated to, you know, career training. I think we can see some strides. Because my hope is that I'm not, I'm not the one getting the phone calls every spring from parents who happen to know me and know that I'm involved in this work. I would like the kids and the families, because I think that's the other gap. Sometimes that information gets passed to the kids, but it doesn't reach the parents, and kids are spacey teenagers. So, I think, you know, that is one area I'd like to see us continue our partnership and increase with the district. The other one is transportation, after-school programs. I think we have some conversations to be had, to brainstorm and figure out. Because I think we have a real equity issue in kids being able to get to these programs. We can have all the great programs, whether it's city parks or whether it's something after-school with the district, that the district's providing, but it's getting the kids to and from the programs and back home. Thank you.
Okay, last question. As the Kent Chamber of Commerce, our mission is to advocate for local businesses and ensure their sustainability, growth within our community. With this mission in mind, we are keeping interest in your strategies and plans to drive economic growth, attract new businesses, and support our existing business community. Could you please share your insights on the following questions? What strategies do you believe essential to foster economic growth, attract new businesses, and support existing businesses in Kent? How would you work with local businesses and organizations to implement these strategies effectively? Marley, we'll start with you.
Okay. Yeah, like I've mentioned before, the city is doing some great work with some incubator programs and some industry supports. I think we need to grow and expand that, and I do think that's going to require more staff. You know, that's, that would be one of the strategies that I want to look at in this new budget, is do we have enough economic development staff to really serve all of our businesses? Large, small, emerging industries and so forth. In addition, I think, you know, this kind of goes back to public safety. I think somebody had mentioned earlier, why would somebody want to open a business next to a vacant building? And I completely agree, and that was one of the things that inspired me to run for council the first time, is that these vacant buildings, these derelict buildings, there's a lot of legalities that make them very, very difficult to deal with because Washington has very strong, you know, property ownership laws. But we also have a very brilliant and creative legal team. And I think we are starting to get better at finding alternative solutions. And I think, you know, I want to continue to pursue cleaning up the cities so that businesses want to make this their business home. And that, you know, with that, I'm running out of time, so I will pass the mic. But, yeah, I think, you know, we still have work to do, and that's an area I'm very interested in.
Yeah, the city council, the current city council has done a good job with the businesses. I will give them that. But to sustain, if we're looking at business sustenance and things like that, or even attracting new businesses, I think some incentives might actually be a good thing. So, you know, I've been working, you know, I've been rolling around in my mind, like tax incentives for new businesses or for people who plant businesses here, maybe tax incentives. Or maybe we can, for a stretch, freeze or maybe even lower business taxes, depending on, depending on the economic outlook of the city as a whole. But we do need to support our businesses. And not only that, we also need to, we need to have the desire to protect businesses. So, again, law enforcement, but also that's going to take a community effort because the police can do so much. But when we come together to defend, to defend our businesses, that goes a long way too. So, I think that between the city council doing their job and the communities looking out for the businesses, I think we can create an environment where businesses can actually thrive here in Kent. Because this is a jewel that's just waiting to be, that's just waiting to be unleashed.
Thank you. So, while I was out door knocking, somebody said to me that Kent still wants to think of itself as a small town, and it's still trying to figure out who it is. I think that we're at a crossroads, and we're at a place where we can direct the vision of what we want Kent to be. And in that, we can look around and see what kind of businesses we want to attract. We obviously have a very large core of space, aerospace. We've got some fantastic small businesses, creative, artistic. But looking around and seeing what some of our other communities might want to see here. You know, do they want to see different restaurants? What would meet their needs? So, I think that we are in a very key position to really focus where we want to see Kent move in the future.
Okay, we have healthcare, manufacturing, and retail are our three major businesses here in the city of Kent. I, and I said this at the beginning, I think that we, first of all, we should, we should start paying our employees better wages, livable wages, in some cases, higher wages. Keep them interested in staying here in the city of Kent, keep them interested in building, and keep them interested in having their children think about staying here in Kent. And then, again, we need to come up with an idea where we could create our own institute, our technical colleges, where we could send our schools that come out of high school to these schools and train for these jobs that we have here in Kent, our jobs that are profitable. We need to invest in our children today if we want Kent to be profitable tomorrow. And this is something I think that other cities are doing now, and look at where they're at. They're thriving, and we could do the same.
So, many of the reasons that businesses want to be in Kent, I think, are many of the same reasons we want to live here. You want to be safe, feel safe, make sure your business is safe. So, that means hiring more police officers, funding the police department. Another thing is making sure that the city looks beautiful. We have invested in street cleanup teams. I don't know if you've noticed, but places like Benson and Kent Kangley don't have as much trash as they used to. It's incredible. Also, ensuring that we have fun places to go to. We have been reinvesting in our parks. Gerson, the Space Park, that's really awesome downtown. We have the Chutes and Ladders Park over on the West Hill. Just making Kent a good place to live will bring in more people, more people to work in these businesses. We also need to focus on workforce training. As was stated earlier, you know, we need to do a better job of getting our kids into those types of programs. The Human Services Department does give grants to some workforce programs. So, just many of the things that are important to residents are important to business. So, I think we just need to keep on that path to support our businesses. I think everyone here loves all the restaurants and wants places to go shopping. So, we want businesses too. So, we're doing what we can.
Well, I would agree. Tax incentives are a nice way to bring in new businesses. But in addition to that, there was that issue that I mentioned earlier about that abandoned restaurant with the windows broken out. What I would work to do is get code enforcement involved. See if there are any violations there with regards to the outward appearance of that building, and then hold those property owners accountable. Because what they're doing isn't just making them suffer, it's making the businesses around them suffer. In addition to that, of course, the crime issue. People want to have their employees feel, no, not feel, have their employees be safe when coming to and going from work. On top of that, it may sound like a crazy idea, but I'd like to see the city On top of that, it may sound like a crazy idea, but I'd like to see the city work with businesses, um, that have been burglarized multiple times in order to figure out some kind of strategy or some way in which the city can help them prevent, prevent themselves from being robbed. It shouldn't just be up to the business owners to spend their money to pay for additional security devices. There was a pizza owner, um, up the hill, third or fourth time, his store's been broken into. And I was talking to him because he had to put up a security gate. And he complained because this is coming out of my pocket, not the city's pocket. When are they gonna do something about it?
Thank you very much. As we near the end of the information sessions, we invite each candidate to deliver a ninety-second closing argument. This is your opportunity to summarize your vision for Kent, reiterate your key priorities, and share your passion for serving our community. Please be mindful of the time, as it allows us to hear from each candidate within the allotted timeframe. We believe your closing statements will leave a lasting impression on community members as they make informed decisions in the upcoming election. We look forward to hearing your final thoughts. We're gonna go in reverse alphabetical. We'll start with Andrea.
I'm used to it. Okay. So I wanted to talk about some of the things that are more positive that we didn't get to talk about. And my key areas just happened to fall in that. Um, I care a lot about police and parks. Those are my two areas of expertise. I was on the Parks Department, uh, commissioned for a long time, and I'm well-versed in, um, police matters. We've done the law in the past four years for our police department. Our new recruits go through a community immersion program where they work with a nonprofit for, I believe, three or four months. They're getting paid. They are learning about our community members and the services available to, um, people in our community. And this is all before they go to the academy. We have also started collecting data on our police, um, encounters. We have also, um, funded the co-responder program that I talked about earlier. And we're fully funded. Our budget, our police are fully funded. We have more. Anyway, so the, uh, the Parks Department, have you seen all the new parks? I talked about West Fenwick. We've got Van Doren's Landing, which is beautiful and amazing. We've got the Space Park, Chestnut Ridge. Um, a lot of parks are getting updated, and that was not the case when I was first elected. Also, our golf course is now fully funding itself. We're not having to subsidize that. It's an incredible accomplishment. And it looks like my time is up.
Marley?
Thank you. Um, yeah, so I'm just gonna expand on my introduction and, you know, restate my priorities. Obviously, public safety. I think it has a ripple effect between just personal safety, business safety, property safety, um, you know, dealing with, you know, wanting to, the economic development that comes from having a clean, safe community free of boarded-up windows and stuff. So it trickles through everything. And so that has to be the number one priority. Um, and then affordable housing and ownership. You know, I talked about that a little bit. Um, I do, you know, I am, I am for density. I am for a variety of housing stock. Um, forty-five percent of our residents today live in multifamily housing units, so I, I hear them, I see them, um, I recognize them, and I don't think that is a form of how, you know, I've heard some negative comments about it, but I think it is a vital form of housing. Um, and I welcome that in our community. Um, and then obviously, economic development. Um, you know, I would like to also see us, uh, you know, we move beyond just the Valley Core and see us look at some visualization efforts up on East Hill. I think that their, you know, business development up there has been kind of ignored recently. We've had other priorities, so totally understand why. But we have mass transit coming to West Hill. We have the, uh, the Rapid Ride Line coming to East Hill, and those are, both, uh, both those partnerships are gonna open up opportunities for us to do some strategic planning around, um, community development in those areas. And that's inclusive of both housing and businesses. So, thank you.
Kelly?
Um, so, again, I'm, I'm a Kent girl. I was raised here. I have been here a long time. And I remember when Kent was smaller, when I could walk downtown and I could shop at the Apple Barrel and Dragnis and Dunham's Grocery Store. And that's things that are bygone era. Uh, I have embraced the change. But there's things, too, where, there's areas where there isn't a grocery store close. And I think those needs need to be met. Um, and so my core concerns, obviously, are public safety. Uh, there's areas in Kent where I've had residents tell me that they don't feel safe to go into at all. And that's not acceptable. Uh, the homelessness, obviously, is a problem. I lived on the Green River for twenty years, and that was a natural attractant. So I've lived it firsthand. I've had a double homicide on my front lawn. So I've seen the darker sides of Kent, but I also see the positive sides of Kent. I see the diversity. I see how much the residents really genuinely do care. And I love this city, and I want to represent each person in it.
John?
Last but not least, huh? Anyway, I'd like to first say I, I apologize if some of my answers weren't, weren't appropriate. And that's because I'm a, I'm an OJT kind of guy. Um, I'm not a career politician. This is my first time ever running. I had careers in aerospace. I had careers in, I was a chem, chemical dependency counselor. I even worked as a TSA agent for a while. Those were my careers. So, but what I could promise to you, like I said, even though I'm not a career, I'm not a career politician, I am going to make politics my career.
Yeah, Mr. John, you've come lately here. I apologize for being late. Uh, but I don't give up. I didn't give up because quitting is just not in my nature. It's not. Um, I'm gonna make this real quick. Number one priority for me, public safety. I'm security, I'm a security guard. Armed, both armed and unarmed, I work in both spaces. I've worked with police, I work really closely with police, different police departments, uh, Renton, um, Toquilla and CTAC, uh, the Sheriff's Department over in CTAC. So I talk to them, and, you know, I kind of get a feel for what, you know, for what they think and what's going on out there. And it kind of spurred that, it kind of spurred that thought in me that, yeah, public safety needs to be number one. Uh, we really need to take care of these guys because they're the ones taking care of us. That's number one. Number two, we gotta look out for our businesses, because I, because I personally believe that the business is gonna be the backbone of Kent. So, um, we need to take care of businesses, and whatever businesses need, I think the city needs to be there to address those needs. Um, and that's kind of what I want to bring to the city council. Number three is education. Gotcha. Number three is education. I'm glad that the new superintendent is working with the city because it gives the city, it gives the city council a chance to have that oversight and be able to address the shortcomings, whatever shortcomings there, there may be, of the education of the, uh, Kent School District, so that our schools can be better and that our curriculum can be better. And I believe that once all of that is addressed, then our city is just primed for growth. But, again, those things need to be addressed, and then this city, we can unleash the potential of this city. Thank you.
Daryl?
Okay, as I said in my opening statement, I come from a customer service background. So basically, I'm a blank slate for the business to commute, for the business community to write on. You tell me what you want, I'll listen, and then we can act. And not only do I live in Kent, I also work in Kent. So what affects your business affects me and my CFO and CEO's business as well. So that we all be on the same page is doing something to improve businesses out here in Kent. What, for the last four years, basically, Kent was promised a plate of law enforcement and homeless crisis management on the side. But what we received was an entree of violent crime with homelessness and property crime as side dishes. The thing is, that crime has gone up in Kent for the last four years, and the twenty-twenty-three numbers are set to surpass those of this year, I mean, of twenty-twenty-two. Finding someone in the act of doing drugs outside my home was just the latest in the number of criminal acts that I have been witness to here in Kent. But if I could fight that on a small scale, if elected, then I could fight it on an even larger scale. All I can say in closing is just, vote for Daryl, or prepare for a second helping. Let me do something to change what's going on here in Kent.
Candidates, on behalf of the Kent Chamber of Commerce and the community of Kent, we want to extend our gratitude and for participating in our city council forum today. Your engagement and commitment to our state's future are truly appreciated. A heartfelt thank you goes to all the candidates who have graciously dedicated their time, talents, and energy to participate in this crucial process. Your commitment to serving the community does not go unnoticed. We look forward to engaging in city council with all of your local legislators. Thank you for your time, and now I'm gonna hand it back to Zenovia.
Okay, so, uh, thank you again. Thank you, John, for moderating that. I know that's never easy. Um, you know, here at the chamber, like we said in the very beginning, our goal really is to, is about communication and collaboration. And so all of you talked about, uh, some of the main points. So public safety, educating our kids and supporting them to be, uh, citizens here within our city, and then economic development. And I know you already know this, but from our standpoint at the Kent Chamber, you know, there's gonna be three things that needs to happen in order for, uh, us to see some success. And that's gonna be communication. And so we welcome you to always engage with the chamber, engage with our Government Affairs Commission, engage with our Board of Directors, engage with our committees, right? And then the other is collaboration. We talked a lot about, you know, who you're helping, and you're helping certain communities, right? Lean on your chamber to gather those people so that you can get that information. You can't actually change anything unless you heard from the people what it is that they need to, um, you know, what they're looking for as far as change. And then action. Go out and, you know, go out and do something about it. And again, you know, we have a lobbyist at the chamber. We're part of the South Sound Coalition. And so we are welcome or open to any conversations that you all want to have about some actions that you want to take locally and then also statewide. So we look forward to working with whomever, um, is, uh, elected to serve our community, whether, um, you know, that's in district or citywide, doesn't matter to us. Our goal is to make sure that we have a safe, prosperous city, and we're looking for you, uh, in order to be able, and the other folks, uh, on city council, Tony, as well, and, uh, to, to, uh, provide that for us. So thank you very much for your time today. We weren't able to get to all of the questions. Uh, but again, I know how to get ahold of all these people. I'll just give your, their information to you. Uh, but I am certain that they are open and willing to have a conversation, have a cup of coffee. Uh, you're welcome to do that at the chamber if you are not in the city, but you want to, uh, maybe bring your staff over to have a conversation, as we're looking at voters in the city of Kent. You may have a business or work here in Kent. You have coworkers. Gather those people around to make sure that they're aware of what's going on. Uh, again, this is being recorded, so you all are welcome to this recording, to share with your, uh, community and to share with folks as well. So, again, another round of applause. Thank you so much to all of our candidates.